All right, so what we've been trying to do is just talk through each position and you explain your increase, what you use to justify that increase, et cetera. And I may not, I mean, you've got a lot of positions. You show a lot of them that's funded by grants. Um, and I'm gonna start with the first one. Like, when the nurse managed clinic came in, they should have stayed, the state funds all of their position. You got all in the same category? Okay. So with that said, we'll just start with the way you've gotten health officer and go through the list. So, um, unless my documents wrong, current salary is eighteen thousand eight hundred and you're requesting a ten percent increase to twenty thousand three hundred and eighty.
Did you receive these documents? You didn't get those?
Well, all this stuff's kind of based on-
They shouldn't have. I don't know what happened to him because there was another officer didn't give him either, so he may have tucked him away someplace, so.
Yeah, some of these, some of these increases are based on these people here, these three here are trained up into these positions. If you'll remember, in April last year, we started losing full-time positions out of four. There were four lost between April and August. So Joyce had her stroke in August. We sent one guy on. So see, Jester went on to the nurse manager clinic. She was here this morning. What was our other one? We had, oh, the administrator. Carly went back to King's Daughters was gonna pay her considerably more money than she was gonna make as administrator here. We hired Carly. So part of what we were directed to do on these salaries at the county council was to put together on these positions, what kind of training they've had, what they've accomplished. They're, these three are up to snuff. We lost one. Uh, we've rehired, had to go through the thirty day process, and that one was down here under, uh, where am I? See, oh, up here, under registrar. So you'll see the registrar position. We'd had somebody until, um, I guess probably a couple of months ago. She decided this wasn't her bag. She took off. That was funded by a grant that was funded by Health First Indiana. And so replacing that registrar will still be funded by, uh, Health First Indiana. Food inspector had always been funded by a different one. So this looks real ominous, but other than the, the increase that we're trying to increase for about the three or four, the rest of these things are either funded by grant or they're things that may or may not be needed. I guess depending on how much Health First Indiana is going to fund this year and compared to our, uh, busyness. The busyness has picked up considerably. So for example, the food inspector, this is under a non-reverting grant that's been around since, uh, probably since I have been on the health board. It's, it's local health maintenance. It, uh, doesn't revert, it just rolls, but it's not being funded anymore because of Health First Indiana. So in the event that we need to hire a food inspector, even part-time, we've put that back in there. You have the salary ordinance and all that. Um, don't know how much of that we'll need. It depends on the busyness. The food is, so, so the one guy, Dan is doing the two jobs. We had a food inspector before, uh, this force split up. Yep, Kelly was doing the food inspector. Of course, the thing about Kelly was she was also kind of just, when she wasn't doing that, it wasn't quite a full-time job. She would run around doing everything in the world. Um, and then Dan's the environmental health specialist. So at that point in time, we had two, and Mark was doing that. So at that point in time, Dan's doing essentially these two jobs. Um, the administrator, been a lot to take care of.
So let me, let me stop you there for a second.
Sure.
Because you, you have, under the environmental health specialist, you've got an increase of seventeen percent from forty-three seven to fifty, fifty-one thousand, basically. But you've also got an increase for the food inspector to thirty-four four from thirty-three four. So are you saying that the food inspector would not be a physician?
It will be, it will be a physician because, uh, we're having to pay our environmental health specialist, he's got two jobs. So he'll be paid out of both of those positions.
But that's a smaller increase.
It's a smaller.
Person's total salary will be eighty?
No, we only use what he, the hours that he uses. We won't, uh, unless we hire another person because the job has picked up. Uh, more food trucks inspections and more pools and more things have been added to his job description. So, um, he'll be using only what his hours will, when he'll work. We would hope that you could keep it the same, not knowing how much of, how many hours of a new person we're gonna have to hire.
And I, I really don't see that being used all the way out.
Yeah.
I can't imagine. Although, he's doing a lot more stuff, you know, complaints. Uh, it used to be complaints were just batted back and forth. And, uh, now he just takes care of them.
And just to clarify a statement that you had made to start out with was that we have a lot of employees. This, let me clarify that. Our registered nurse is also our school liaison. Uh, environmental health specialist also is our food inspector. Uh, our nurse is also a fat backup, emergency prepared backup. So these are the same people, and we have five departments in the, in the health department, and there's only one employee per department.
Bear with me, I'm trying to find your actual paperwork that you submitted your one forty four form. Sorry. I'm listening, but-
Is this what you're looking for?
I got it here somewhere. Which one do I have? Do I have this?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand.
But yes, that's one of-
Some of these positions-
Mobile hats.
Yeah.
There were, there were mobile hats.
I don't know if we have that many people down there.
No.
No, we don't. No, we're, we're doing several jobs. Each person's doing several jobs. But it's paid out of different funds depending on what job they're doing.
So if you see the ones that say eleven sixty-one funded by grant, the eleven sixty-one fund is a Health First Indiana. Got like the registrar up there, so that's one of the full-timers that, that's totally taken care of. I guess other than providing heat and a chair and whatnot, stuff like that. I also want to mention, the public health nurse does not, her hours do not make it such that she does not use benefits. So with her different jobs, she, she doesn't get up to that point where she's exercising county benefits.
So, in order to make this more realistic than, I mean, you're saying that the thirty-four four seventy for food inspector probably isn't realistic unless you replace that position?
Or add to that position. Not replace it, but add to.
And then of course, see this stuff, I don't see how that would affect the tax levy because that's basically, I guess except for it helps it because that's funded by a grant that's non-reverting. It sits there and, in fact, they don't, fund that in any fashion anymore. Once that's gone, it's gone. There are two or three of those now that, because of Health First Indiana. Um, what's the other one? Indiana, uh, the other one that's like that, that's non-revert-
Local health maintenance and then the trust.
Indiana Trust, that's what we call it. So Indiana Trust is like that too. So once those things are used up, and that was by design with State Department of Health. But those things had already been, that was money in there. They financed the last year, which was two thousand twenty-three, I guess, and then those are done. And you're just, you know, you're just spending money out of those as you need it. They don't want you to consolidate these numbers, though. It gets confusing. They don't want you to consolidate these numbers because some of these have specifics. Like food inspector and, um, well, even at one point in time, um, the registrar, could have been funded by, both of those could have been funded by local health maintenance, if you had enough money in it at that point in time to do it.
So then maybe a better way to go through this is, so you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, so eight positions that are grant funded. Registrar, food inspector, relief nurse, clerical, one and two, school liaison, P H C director, and P H C assistant.
Yeah, school liaison's a little different.
Those are not, those are not funded whatsoever by the general fund.
Right.
And in the past, you've only, uh, the only thing that's been submitted to you is eleven fifty-nine. But I was, uh, told this year we need to, anytime there's a salary, you wanna see it.
So would that be these other six positions? Health officer, administrator, environmental health specialist, public health nurse, and relief nurse?
Anything that you see eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, I think it's what those funds on here.
Eleven fifty-nine, those are here.
Basically, basically top four there. Yep.
Do you need a copy?
So yeah, that's those six positions. So let's just talk about those six only. Since the rest of them are grant funded and do not impact the general fund.
Okay.
And the first one was the county health officer. Again, you had submitted a ten percent, um, increase, which is only eighteen hundred dollars. I mean, to put it in perspective. What, I mean, how, what, what is that request based on? I mean, what's-
That request is based on, um, the fact that we have to meet more, consult more because of the programs we're doing with the Health First. Uh, just that, what's happening in the health department. There used to be like a regular four, a quarterly meeting. Now we're meeting quieter, much more than that, much more. There's more time involved, more effort involved, more phone calls involved, research involved. So before we can act on anything, we have to play it out.
He, he basically has to do more than he used to have to.
Not that it matters, but who is that position?
Well, that's Friedy.
Oh, Dr. Friedy, okay. So he's also a medical doctor?
No, that's for a nurse managed clinic, which has nothing to do with us.
Right.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in this, the, the health, health, the State Department of Health always calls them health officers for this. And they either have to have a medical degree or either it has to be someone with a public health degree, master's in public health, and then you still have to hire kind of an on-call physician for emergencies and things. There are only two routes around that.
Um, county administrator, uh, from the forty-three seven thirty. Well, let me ask you, what, what's the office hours of your facility?
We open at seven thirty and we close at four thirty, uh, on Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday. And then Wednesday, we're there from eight to four thirty, and Thursday, eight to four thirty. So we're, we're open many more hours than forty hours.
So you're, you're open five days a week?
We are.
Of course, the hours are such that they're, they're different because, for example, on the environmental health specialist, those guys that are doing septic and things like to try to, have days to catch him earlier or later after they've gone out and done their workday. So what's, what's one of those, like seven thirty to four thirty?
Yeah, there's three of those, three days, seven thirty to four thirty.
So your administrator, you requested an increase from forty-three seven thirty-four to fifty thousand two ninety-five, uh, which is fifteen percent increase. And I'm assuming it's based on this?
Yeah, all those five departments that I described earlier, it's my job to make sure that I know all five departments, not just mine, not just environmental health specialist, not just nursing, not just registrar and vital records. I have to be involved in every single thing, all the training. Um, so it's, it's been-
And the other thing, just a busyness factor. I mean, there's a lot more stuff going on. Like I say, like I say, you know, we handle, we handle more complaints, uh, than had ever been handled before. It's, it was always, that was always just a ball, the bat back and forth within government. No, that's, that's, that's the health department. No, it's somebody else's department, you know. Well, those are taken care of now. Somebody listens to them on the phone. We go out and figure out what the deal is. Um, the other thing with Kathy's position is she had to hit it, hit the ground running because there was not an administrator. And so she had not been in this field particularly. So she had to hit the ball or hit the ground running and also, um, attend some of these workshops and one thing or another, and Zoom meetings, one thing or another, to get trained up. So, which the board feels she has. She's achieved that goal at this point in time. She started in April of last year, and so she's got a year in plus.
And that training is ongoing. I mean, there's always new developments, changes that take place that I have to know about, so. Oh, it is, it is, it is, uh.
I mean, it's, I've been over across the river thirty-three years. I'm always on it, you know.
Oh, definitely, definitely. Any job that never stops, yeah.
So on the environmental health specialist, you submitted an increase from forty-three seven thirty-four to, incorrect, make sure this isn't a typo, to fifty thousand nine eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay, seventeen percent. And part of the reason you gave for that a minute ago was that that person's also doing the food inspector.
Right.
Well, it's also, he's trained up, ready to go at this point in time too.
But, so let me ask you this. But when he's doing the food inspector job, that paid out of the grant money, or no?
How have you been doing that?
Well, there were two ways to do it, and the way that we are doing it at this point is we are going to use the environmental health specialist, uh, salary. When that runs out, we will move to the food inspector salary. Uh, that's really hard. His job is in and out all day long. It can move from food to septic within minutes and back and forth. You can't, or complaints, uh, pool inspections. So it's, it's pretty difficult to just say, okay, he can't clock in and out twenty, thirty times a day just because he's moving from one phone call to another phone call, to one research to another research, or out on, uh, in the field.
And you're right, food inspector, the eleven sixty-eight local health maintenance, it is a designated fund for that, but it's, it's not, that's not financed anymore at this point in time.
At what point do you expect it to run out?
I don't, I don't know. It just depends on how much we can rely on Health First Indiana compared to eleven fifty-nine fund and all that.
The be, the better we manage it, the longer we'll have it.
Right, but what I'm getting at, it looks to me like, it looks to me like you're trying to fund basically that position with the environmental health specialist position. I mean, a seventeen percent increase is pretty significant. And obviously, if you can raise it there, then you don't give as much out of the food inspector and then that lasts longer, right?
Well, I'd rather finance out of eleven fifty-nine fund.
If you wanna make a, a suggestion?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to understand more than anything. I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that, that a seventeen percent increase is probably not very realistic and, and gonna be very difficult. I mean, you know as well as I do that our tax revenue is most likely down, probably because of, if nothing else, because of the reassessment of Bel Air. We know automatically that's a hundred and sixty or seventy thousand dollars. Um, I don't know. Did you, did you see the complete spreadsheet that I put together and sent out there, Bobby? I didn't have your emails. I didn't send it to you, but I had them put it on the county website so that the people that I didn't send it to could access it there.
No, I didn't.
Um, and obviously, this isn't-
What, what was the, what was the focus of it? Okay, oh, okay.
I was here for all those.
Oh, and as of right now, the total request is, is a ten percent increase in wages all, overall, or almost six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's probably not real, realistic. Um, again, we won't know until we put the total budget together, but-
You know, the existing, the existing salaries were well below everyone around us, other counties around us.
Well, I was just looking at the fact book and that's not totally accurate.
Where are you gonna find an R N that's capable of-
Well, I, I didn't look at R N.
For thirty, thirty bucks, thirty bucks an hour?
So the health specialist, environmental health specialist, yeah, most of them range anywhere from thirty-seven thousand to fifty-three ballpark.
They either have an assistant or they're doing, or that may be an assistant at the low, at the low-ball figure. Or they're not doing food inspections also.
Right, right. And I don't disagree with that. But again, my point is, I feel like you're saying that it deserves a seventeen percent because they're also doing the food inspection, but then you're funding it from that position rather than from a food inspector position.
There was a fifty thousand dollar assistant environmentalist position in Dearborn County. That was posted, that was posted.
They're not comparable in size.
Posted lately. No, this was an assistant. So this, this is, uh, Daniel's doing the, the main job without assistance.
Are you, what county are you comparing?
I'm just comparing it to the like-size county.
Population?
Population, right, right.
Well, we were, um-
And don't misunderstand me. I don't put a lot of weight in this thing because every county's different. Every county's revenue's different. I mean, but it kind of gives you a barometer as to what other counties are doing, but it, that doesn't necessarily mean anything because at the end of the day, it's all gonna be based on what you can afford, based on your tax base or revenue.
Um, this has been like sort of an ongoing conversation with the council, and so this is the first year I understand coming to you. Uh, so that's why it's titled, uh, in request from the council. Uh, it's been in the May, April and May meeting both, it was said that no department had had ever come to the council and said why they deserve an increase over the standard amount.
Three percent.
Yeah, and so, so that, that was just brought to us and it, we were pointed out specifically that this is what we should do.
No, he took off. He's not out here.
But this is specifically what we should do is to, um-
He was council.
No, you were on that.
I remember.
Last year?
Yeah.
When were you, when did you become official?
About February.
Okay, so this was, the meetings were April and May. And so they told us this is what we were to do in order to, uh, be considered over the, just the standard, um, increase. So we took on the challenge and said, okay, we'll, we'll do that. We'll show you what we have to do. And so that's the reason for it.
So, and again, it, obviously, I come from a corporate background. I'm not used to government. I'm used to increases being based on performance, performance being based on very objective metrics. Don't really have much of that in, in government. Are there metrics within your office that, that you can-
We should be able to turn that up, basically, probably on how many, um, at, at one point in time, okay, at one point in time, this environmentalist position had the environmentalist, that was Joe Spiller, we're talking back there years ago. So Joe Spiller did that position. Um, he had some varying assistants that took care of these, uh, going out and checking septic or checking before or looking at soil. Actually, the environmentalist would do the review of the soil reports. But then you'd also have probably a half to two-thirds time food inspector. So the stuff that he's working his way into, you know, things are getting busy after people are done with COVID at this point in time. People are getting busy again. They're building houses, doing all this stuff. That position's getting a lot busier.
Right, so potentially one of your methods would be a number of field calls or whatever, for example.
Well, I think you could put together, number one, you could put together probably complaints compared to last year.
I was gonna ask you, uh, are your complaints, because I know you've missed a complaint several times.
There gets to be a fine line there on whether it's building or whether it's health-related. And so, used to be that was batted all over the place. We just kind of took a policy. Actually, when I was filling in a little bit in between, somebody called with a complaint, I just went out and solved it, you know, like-
And just in the year that I've been here, a little, almost a year and a half now, um, the complaints have increased because the health department is exposing themselves to, we're here to help. We're here to be here for the community. That word gets out. We, we, people call us when they don't have heat, when they don't have water, the rent, the renters. And so more people are calling us because now they know that we're there to help and we're gonna get an answer for them or help them, send them on their way with, uh, information. So I think as we're growing and we're coming out of the COVID years where nothing was happening, more things are happening. We're exposing ourselves to the community to be, to be available to them, whether it's medical, septic, food, or whatever. So that's one of the, we're kind of encouraging, let us help you. You're our community and that's what our job is here. That's what here, we're here to do. So-
Help you because your, so your complaints aren't necessarily related to something you did or didn't do.
No.
Right, it's all, it's just, it's general.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a fine line too on whether it's actual building issues or, you know, but ultimately, if it turns into a health issue. And then some of those are bogus, you know, too, but he's still got time and driving out someplace.
Right.
He was gone, what was it, two or three weeks ago to a training session. So I was getting a couple of calls at home about this lady with a little kid and husband or something, they lived here in town that didn't have air conditioning. It was like getting close to a hundred, you know, that ninety-eight business and stuff like that. So I stopped down there. And by that point in time, I was banging on the door. She had so many of these portable air conditioners in her windows that people had brought. You couldn't, she couldn't even hear me knock. So, you know, I thought, okay, well, that's solved. That's, but you know, still, if that'd been like someplace in, uh, out on Red Hawk Pike or something, you'd have some, well, probably an hour driving out and back.
Yeah, those complaints aren't against the health department. Those complaints are the community having, needing help and support. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, public health nurse, uh, you're asking-
That's thirty, thirty bucks an hour. She doesn't-
Ten percent increase.
Doesn't receive any benefits.
Fifty-four. So this is no benefits?
No benefits. And she won't be, she won't be working up to that salary, I don't think.
Yeah, and that's one of the areas that we've kind of worked with too, is having a nurse there five days a week opposed to three days a week and being able to get the same job done. Um, and, but as COVID and flu vaccines come in in October, November, and the school vaccines come in next month, this month and next month, that time will increase. So it's, it, it's forever changing throughout the month.
But just to give you an example, public health nurse in here, again, it's all over the board, as low as thirty-four thousand, to as high as sixty-one. For, well, that's getting into county double our size, but let me just go. Counties and population from eight thousand to twelve thousand, it ranges, that's kind of odd because the higher population counties, the lower it's going. Fifty-eight, fifty-nine, forty-nine, fifty-nine, fifty-six, forty, forty-four, and fifty-five.
Does it specify on there whether that's, uh, how many hours a week that is? And I did my own little survey around the counties.
Is that the one the council would also have?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I looked at that and there were a lot of non-responses from different counties in those.
Well, we only showed two, and that's Union and Switzerland.
Yeah. I was wondering about that too. Why, why doesn't, why is somebody not appointed to do that for Switzerland?
But some of those numbers-
Have to be you and you, you do everything else. Got it?
It's comparing apples to oranges because, because the question I wasn't asking in the beginning was how many hours a week. You know, I was just getting a how many thousands of dollars a year they're gonna make, but they weren't telling me how many hours. So I had to learn to ask more questions than less. Um, so it's kind of hard to use those as a, a good guideline.
To one, on your sheet here, how many of these, I mean, this is basically bullet points of everything that that physician is responsible for. How many of them are, I'll say, new or, or new or, or an increased responsibility?
A lot of it, because she was just, yeah, she was just the relief nurse before. So she didn't actually order vaccines, uh, inquire about vaccines, monitor the freezers, refrigerators, and all this stuff. So she's transformed into this role where she's the regular nurse at this point in time.
And the state has, uh, increased some of the responsibilities as far as, uh, systems that we use, monitoring, tracking, reporting. It's, they used to not have that kind of information that they, we had to give them every week or every month. And, uh, that's increased quite a bit. And with Health First programs, of course, we pay the nurse out of that, so, with, other than this. But, um, some of those programs crossover and-
And you say that position's also the school liaison?
Yes, she is. And that's paid out of a different account, not the eleven fifty.
That's, that's one that'll, you know, for next few years, uh, the way I see that is we're gonna be required to have a school liaison, but that fund isn't gonna be there. So that was a non-reverting grant fund that's started as like two sixty or so and, about, what was I looking at the other day? Probably twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year going, is going out of that for different things. So, uh, get out about five years or so.
Does that position do school liaison?
School liaison.
She goes to-
Actually does vaccines.
She goes to the school and does, uh, vision screenings, hearing screenings, vaccines, back-to-school vaccines. Um, she's there for any time that health nurse needs assistance. Uh, the schools call on us to be a backup when they have an overflow. Um, she's there for any time that health nurse needs assistance. Uh, the schools call on us to be a backup when they have an overflow. So anything that has to do, that's funded and granted, is anything that has to do with schools, school kids, uh, and their needs and.
Then also expenditures that are school age kids or school related comes out of that too. For example, how many A, AEDs?
We, we have twelve that we've given to them this year.
Yeah, let me ask you a question because I'm a little bit confused. Like the Nurse Managed Clinic, for example, they said all of theirs paid from the state does not come out of the general fund. A lot of these positions fall in that same category, but they're grant-funded. But every one of these positions are in the salary ordinance.
Cause we, they're not funded through the general fund, none of them are.
But they still have to be included in the salary ordinance? Okay.
Cause the county doesn't.
Now, remember, the Nurse Managed Clinic's a rare bird. I'm not sure there are any others of those around the state. This is something that's been running for twenty, well, actually, maybe it's since like late nineties. And it's just, it's a real rare bird. It's, but it's just it.
The reason I ask that question is because the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish, I don't know, I don't know that I need to include them. But you would still need the information so that it is included in.
Right.
The ordinance, salary ordinance.
I can't see how it'd have to be included in the, in a tax levy.
Not necessarily the tax levy itself, but in the ordinance, like he's saying. I mean, like this, she's referring to eleven fifty-nine. Where my budget's one thousand one oh two. At the beginning of twenty-five, I'm back to square one and whatever I have left goes back to the general fund. But she has left at the end of the year, it's still accruing in there.
Yeah, it's non-reverting.
A carryover.
Not too much accruing to that.
And all these funds there were grants funded.
Grant or the eleven fifty-nine.
So the eleven fifty-nine you said was paid out of general fund? Yeah, yeah. But the other ones, sixty-one and.
All, yes.
You want the new one, the.
Sixty-eight maybe?
Yeah, sixty-one's health first, sixty-eight's local health maintenance.
So I'm going to, for purposes of what we're, and I'm going to take these, uh, grant-funded ones out. I'm just going to leave eleven fifty-nine on sale.
Okay. Let me ask you a question though. If she's hoping to be able to hire someone, for example, to kind of work with these funds and all, so that takes that off of her, so she can concentrate on health department stuff. You know, this has how many funds, gazillions of funds, thirteen?
There's thirteen of them.
So one of those positions, would we have to have an ordinance for that even with it being paid by a grant? Would have to have a salary ordinance for that position?
If you're going to add a position, if you're going to add someone.
A new position.
Yeah, no, it'll have to be in the salary ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
And the carryover funds, how does that work when there's a salary ordinance that's going to cap a salary? Like the carryover funds, can I use those to increase the salary ordinance or increase a salary?
You, the money that is in, I don't know, eleven fifty-nine, I mean, that's going to be for your daily supplies also.
Okay.
And you can't just increase the salary without coming to them, correct?
But, and, and I understand the procedure has to happen, but I'm just saying, logistically, can those carryovers make up for any increase in salary that we feel like they need?
For example, the balance that was being carried at the beginning of this year would have been funding you shouldn't have needed for twenty twenty-four. So whether you can go back on.
So how, yeah, so how does that work as far as having a cap?
Some of these funds you have act for a stipend.
Okay, that's in a grant though. Yeah, yeah.
If they're all in the grant.
They're all in a grant. Like that's the balance out there?
Well, those, those are, don't go by the B S R. Those are necessarily inaccurate. I would have to give you a balance sheet.
Okay, I'd like one. But that was my question was any monies that's carried over? How do I, do I come to you to say I'd like to use that carryover in a salary increase?
I would have to ask. I don't know that she can.
Yeah, I don't believe.
You know, she would have to ask.
Can we, can we find out so I know kind of where to move for, how to move forward with that?
I mean, I would, I, yeah, I don't.
I, I would be, I would have to be counsel or Jackie question.
Yeah, I would need to.
That position, doctor speaking, possibly in the future.
Put my clerical assistant one or two.
That was, that's what I was going to ask, would that fall under clerical?
She can explain those better, yeah.
It'll call, it'll come under clerical accounting budgets, anything, uh, those three items.
We're getting a little behind. Let's, let's do the last two positions. You've got relief nurse.
Mm-hmm.
And going from seventy-six forty-three to maybe I put this in eleven nine ninety-nine, is that right?
Oh, it, it down at, uh, yeah, it's got, I've got it by the bi-weekly. You're coming up with the, yes, and the reason for that is because we need the relief nurse sometimes just to fill in for the person that's working three days a week. When she needs time off or has to be at the school doing something and then we have to pull in a relief nurse.
Or sick, or whatever. Yeah, if you're a nurse that was sick.
So this relief nurse is a relief for the public health nurse?
Yes.
So wouldn't that just be funded from that account?
What account?
I don't think it ever has been, but.
Well, I guess, I guess if the.
Relief nurse is funded through eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, that's, that's through eleven fifty-nine.
So is the public health nurse.
Yeah.
My, I guess my question is if. She's working when the public health nurse isn't working, right?
But two different jobs, two different jobs. Uh, one, the relief nurse does not do any, she relieves medically, but not administratively. She, she can come in and do the vaccines and all the medical things that our R N provides for the community, but she does not do the administrative work that the public health nurse does. Well, there's more, there's more than just nursing going on.
Yeah, it gets, it gets technical enough on that too, that there aren't just people that give vaccines. There's a training, whatever it is, infants, I don't know what the age is. Sixteen months down or something like that. You have to be trained and certified in that. Uh, you know, it's, it's so you get some technicalities on that stuff too. The other part of that, if you see, I know you weren't going to consider funded by grant, but anytime we're using a relief nurse for like going out on the road to do some of these, uh. We were trying, we were trying the Patriot East Enterprise, you know, kind of remote sites. So that would be covered by Health First Indiana.
But you got one, one year that's a relief, or eleven sixty-one funded by grant, you got one eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah.
And these grants are specific to what the nurse does. And so if she goes out using Health First Fund program monies, then we pay it through Health First. If it's through the clinic, then it's through the local eleven fifty-nine.
In fact, we've actually cut quite a bit of budget by doing that. For example, picking up the registrar. That's paid, paid by Health First Indiana.
And the license with the janitor, which you've got three percent, I think that's very.
And that job hasn't changed very much, so we just left it like that. It's just the same.
Do you have any, Randy or Jerry, you have any other?
I was just again looking at the, the increases here and I. It'll be really tough.
NAS is going to give you any extra bucks this year?
I'm sorry?
Is NAS going to give you any extra bucks this year?
Uh, I don't know. I won't know until December or something like that. If I'm still there, I may retire. Who knows? Something. I keep saying that, you know, but I mean, I, I don't. I don't know. I assume they will. They're, they're, they're not going to give me ten or fifteen percent. I can promise you that.
I can tell you our proposal, commissioners and councils is either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we decide, council.
I won't be a counselor or commissioner.
Seven years and I think we've got one rate.
That's about six percent rates, I think.
Well, maybe we should give one, Jerry, since you're going out, then that way, then it will all be an increase.
It wasn't on the year, they got gracious and caped it.
She does hope you guys hire me like a Jackie to the health department or something.
Yeah, I'm going to offer myself up to consulting on that.
There you go.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming in. We appreciate you finding us. I mean, at least we, if nothing else, it helps us better understand why we're. The requests that are being made is made anyway and understand really, for me anyway, uh, in more detail what everybody really does do.
I just thought one other thing on environmental side is one of the things that we were falling behind with, with the state was on this ITOS, which I can't remember what that's the acronym for, but what it basically is, is having somebody do data entry on these septic systems. So that all goes into a central, with the state, a central area with the State Department of Health. So Kelly, while she was still there, had gotten barely started on that. We're way behind on that and you're, at this point in time, just by you having Daniel train the registrar and all, you guys are up into what, what year was it the other day? Up into the nineties or something? Yeah. So using just extra scraps of time. Now we have a new registrar to train, of course, but, uh, you know, get somebody on that where they can catch that stuff up.
So we're just going, got twenty-some years ago.
Yeah, probably, but however.
But that was only accomplished in a couple of months, so it won't be, yeah, it won't be long. But I want to leave you.
Some of them went back in the sixties.
I want to leave you with the thought. Um, the thought, it, it's, it's a, not even a promise, it's going to happen. Um, we are going to be more and more available to the community than we have in a long time. And that's because we're asking for it. We want to be there for the community and we're going to keep working at being more and more involved, offering more and more services. So. That's another reason for the request for the, the increase is we're, we're not just sitting back doing our job eight to five. We're out there really beating the pavement to see what we can do. More that we can do for the community. So I just want you to understand it. We, we're going to increase our work as well as asking for the increase in salary.
I was just going to ask about like settlers. How, how many subjects been put into county this year?
I don't know the number. I've looked, I looked, did look through those numbers over the years. There was a. When, when Joe Spiller was kind of finishing up those last three or four years, um, when he was finishing up, there were an enormous number. And that's when, of course, like I say, you had a full-time food inspector, you had a part-time environmentalist, and then you had the full-time environmentalist. It's not just, it's not just how many are put in. It's like the quarterly report will read, like you have to go out and do kind of a pre-inspection. You have to review the soil science part of it. Um, you might go out with some type of either complaint from a neighbor or something like that where something's running on somebody else. Then you have to figure out whether that's something that can be repaired. So that's, you, you have to figure all those numbers, but as far as the actual hands on, I don't remember how many he's done for the last quarter.
Anything else for us? Well, we appreciate you coming.
I think so.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks for listening.
Oh, no, the checks are in the middle. I just said that at the point. Check for, check for the shoulder.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Good one.
You don't need this back?
Yes, yeah.
Mark, Mark, Mark. Yours is easy.
I know. I try to keep it simple.
So we don't really even have to go through yours other than the last two. Um, summer youth program, you've asked for an increase from twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
Just to allow, like for another fellow to work there. The ones that we had there this year. Uh, restained all of the shelters and the picnic tables and helped with some weed control and, and just. They were just on hand to help Paul. Paul puts in a lot of time up there and he's paid nineteen dollars an hour. And by the time they get everything mowed, he's used up some hours, you know, so he's never used all of his money. And neither has the assistant, so that's why we just kept them at the same. I just added a, a little bit to mine, not, and if you don't want to give me that, that's fine too.
Is that the thirteen dollars?
Yes.
Yes. Is that okay?
I think it's perfectly fine.
Okay. I decided twelve fifty a quarter wasn't too, too bad. Um, and then with our custodian. I increased hers to twenty-four fifty per day. I wouldn't go up there and clean those bathrooms two times a day for twenty-four fifty, but.
Yeah, that's, uh.
I felt like, I felt like that was fair to her.
Seen those bathrooms after a ball game?
Yeah.
Do these, is this funded by general fund? I don't have any questions, Jerry. Jerry, if you were any.
We're done?
Very respectful request.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
I mean, if it's total six hundred dollars.
Right, that's it.
It's a hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Overall.
I mean, I'm just two percent in this couple of angles.
I'm, I'm absolutely good with this.
Is it?
Well, we appreciate you coming in. I hope we didn't waste your time.
Well, not much. I had to shower and do all of that anyway, you know, so.
Okay, we're good.
We're good to go.
Well, ma'am, thank you very, very much.
You're much, I really only needed five minutes, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
All right, well.
See you later. Be careful.
All right, we're good until twelve thirty, I think. Let me look.
Yeah, of course.
Twelve thirty, quarter, twelve thirty. So we'll.